We'll ask Sandy to read the clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin State statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And Sandy, would you take your role, please?
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett. Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan. Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Pachasky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Chuck Whitman.
Here.
Dillian Peterson.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Eight present, we have a quorum.
That's crazy. Okay, you have a consent agenda. The consent agenda is where we take one motion on all of the items that are on that consent agenda and vote on those with that one motion. Sandy says that there are no additional handouts for that, so unless council would like to see something moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
We have a motion by Keeland, second by Olson, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. It is annoying, isn't it?
Yes, it's hard to deal with.
Okay, under the regular agenda, maybe we're gonna have to take Henry's microphone away from him. Regular agenda, we have no additional items there, except I would request that we remove, under the issues, project discussion, we have 10A there. I would ask that we remove that and we will bring that back at the July meeting. Chief Golk was unavailable to be here tonight, he's not feeling well, so he'd asked that he could be in attendance when we had this discussion. So, I would ask that whoever makes the motion, remove that 10A, and we'll take that up at our next meeting.
I move that we accept the agenda with the removal of 10A from it.
Second?
Motion by Keeland, second by Peterson, that we approve of the regular agenda, except with that one deletion. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Thank you. Let's move on then to non-agenda items and announcements. We have, Henry's gonna take this, recognition of our Wopaka High School graduating seniors who served on our city Youth on Boards. So, Henry?
Looks like Elizabeth is here. Oh, and Thomas.
Here.
hiding behind the, come out in front, guys.
Are you guys, you're fantastic.
Does she belong to you? Yes. In 1999, the former mayor Lewinsky held a youth summit, and there was a lot of things that came out of that summit, and one of them was that the youth didn't have a voice in their community. Another one that came out was that they didn't have a place to go. And there were some other things, but those were two that I could remember as I was walking up here. But the rec center, as you could see, came to fruition, and this project, and I consider it a project, Youth on Boards also came into consideration. So you guys are like the 15th year crop of kids, young adults that have come through and have played a role in governing our city, and I credit the council at that time of putting this in place because it was pretty unique. Yeah, mayors will appoint a youth council, and they'll do this, and they'll do that, but in our case, we actually gave young people a vote. You know, your vote mattered, you know? So it was pretty unique, we got some recognition for the program, and to this day, I don't know that there's a half a dozen communities that are doing something similar to this. Now, you guys should be very proud of your accomplishment. And, you know, these are one of those programs where you know it's the right thing to do, but you really never know if it's effective, you know? Only we can tell, and I don't know those first group of students, you know, are they involved in their city government? Maybe they're mayor somewhere, maybe they're involved in a commission or something, so hopefully this experience will give you that insight, that when you get older, get through college, maybe when you're in college, you'll be involved in some governing situation. So hopefully we planted that seed in you.
Either that, or they'll get rid of that out of their system.
Yeah. We need really good leaders in the future, believe me, and so it's good that you've been exposed. Elizabeth, we're giving you a little certificate of appreciation. And Thomas, you as well. In the envelope, Healthy Community, Healthy Youth, was really started as a result of that summit, and we recognize, and every year we'll give our students that are coming through and graduating, a little token, a little token of our appreciation for you serving. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Ripley College, how about you? Good? Congratulations. Good luck. Go Boyners!
Can I just say that Elizabeth, Elizabeth was on our library board, and she was also on the ad hoc planning committee, and her input as a youth on our board was really valuable.
Then I have to say that Thomas was on our park and recreation board. And he is more mature than I am, I'm fairly certain.
And you're more mature than I am. Awesome. Well, thank you, both of you. We appreciate your service to the city, and hopefully we can continue this Youth on Board for future years and generations. Let's move on then, we have a proclamation. It's Arts Appreciation Month, and Sandy is putting it in front of me, and I know Marcy's here tonight, so Marcy, I'll let you have an opportunity to speak after I read this, but we have a proclamation, Arts Appreciation Month. Whereas the Wopaka community has a long history of volunteers coming together to promote the arts and arts appreciation. From a few dedicated people working to provide artistic exposure to the community, our arts community has grown to include a very sizable artist community and many different organizations and art-related businesses of all kinds. Whereas the arts not only provide entertainment, self-expression, and community building, but also create environments that promote innovation, curiosity, and ingenuity. Exposure to the many different kinds of artistic expression stimulates the development of creative solutions to both new and old challenges, and a thinking outside the box mentality that is so vitally needed in today's world. Whereas the many different arts organizations, our arts-related businesses in our area enhance our economy, bring in many tourist dollars, and make our community a more vital, robust, and dynamic place to live and visit, our active arts community is a wonderful human compliment to the natural beauty for which we have long been known. Whereas it is more than appropriate to honor and celebrate our dynamic and thriving artistic community with the month of August as Arts Appreciation Month. Now therefore, I, Brian Smith, Mayor of City of Wopaka, do hereby proclaim the month of August as Arts Appreciation Month. And Marcy, as long as you're here tonight to hear that, you want to just tell us a little bit about the event that's coming up in August and?
Oh, okay, well, Arts on the Square is happening August 13th through 15th. On the 13th, the retailers are doing a bunch of events, so they're kind of adding another day to the festival, so they'll be doing an Adopt a Square chalking event around the library, where businesses rent a square and they hire kids to chalk it, and there'll be little prizes. Middle school band will be playing that night, and the retailers will also be chalking in front of their stores, and that's, every year gets a little bit more. This year, I think some of them are actually gonna paint on their windows, too, so it's just creating kind of an artistic, you know, environment for the festival to start on Friday. Then Friday night, we have the street dance with Davina and the Vega Bonds, which is a really well-known group in Minneapolis, and they do about 275 gigs a year, so they're a serious player. They play a lot in Europe, and west coast, east coast, so they're really something to see. We have an anonymous donor that's paying for that whole thing, so that's really cool. And then Saturday, we, I just met with Angie, actually, we went through it. It's a little bit over the top again, this year. We have three music stages with really great acts, and we have a poetry tent, and actually, it's kind of cool that you're here. Elizabeth has started a poetry club at the high school called the Dead Poets Society, and we heard about that group through Bill Zimmerman, because they went and presented some information on their group at Rotary, and he said, "We gotta get some poetry at the festival." So, at the same time, I had met, and I don't know if the last time I was here I told you guys about this, but I met this subway poet in New York City at Union Station, and he's actually a professional published poet, and he's very accomplished. He'll be coming here, so with those two things, we've built a fourth stage this year, it's the poetry stage, so the kids are gonna man, we haven't got all the details worked out, but we're really in the enthusiasm stage. There's gonna be a poetry slam, which is a poetry open mic, basically, right? There's apparently a lot of poets, and you guys all might be poets, too, so that's another thing that's happening at Arts on the Square, so we're really thrilled. We have closed to artists now, we are full with artists, so every year, that gets a little bit more, I guess prestigious to be an artist at this festival. So anyone who goes to arts festivals knows that the quality is super important, and every year, it really ramps up, so our jury chair, Bev Crane, has done a fabulous job at making that something that's really, you know, something that artists covet getting into our festival, because they have to go through a jury process, and actually, they do reject quite a few artists to keep the quality up. So that brings in people who are really willing to buy serious art. You know, one year, there was a lady from the chain that bought paintings at Arts on the Square, she bought, I think, 12 paintings, and, you know, they were between $200 and $500 apiece. So that kind of, people coming in, looking to buy more expensive things, higher-quality things, makes them aware of our city and our downtown structure, which we've got some really great shops downtown, so I think it truly does also meet the needs of the economic, you know, the creative economy that has started here. So Arts on the Square does a lot of things, it pulls people together, but it's good for the economy, and it certainly is fun, and we're looking forward to it, and I would just like to thank the city for putting up with us, and also for the Room Tax Grant, which also greatly helps us put this festival on. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Marcy, appreciate that. Happy to get the word out for you, too, tonight. Yeah, they do this mostly with, or almost completely with volunteers, so it's much appreciated, and, you know, it's, the one activity that we have, which is actually this weekend, is the Strawberry Fest, and that's a very strong event for us in the summer, and the Arts on the Square has become something that equals that, or close to equals that, so it's great to have another event like that. So thank you. Now let's move on then, we have public input. This is for anybody in the audience or council that would like to speak to the city council on a non-agenda item. If you would like to do that, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and limit your discussion with us to five minutes or less. Anybody that would like to give us public input? If not, we'll move on to department announcements and reports, and as always, we'll start with Kathy, our finance director, treasurer.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. And my report in the packet, just to expand a little bit more on the use of the city's credit card. It is a procurement card that is used by over 250 municipalities, counties, and school districts within the state. That is bid out every three years by the Waukesha County Purchasing Department, and it's through JP Morgan Chase and MasterCard. One of the things that I'll be working on within the next month is that all of the departments will be able to access their card information online, and to eliminate the redundancy of them issuing separate purchase orders for each individual charge that they put on the card. There'll be a one monthly report in which that they will, in which they will indicate what description they want into the general ledger and the accounts to charge. The other thing is, is we've seen this year, an increase in the rebate with this program, both on the percentage of the rebate that the group does. The consortium did over $200 million on this card combined, and that has increased the amount that we receive in a rebate, which is about 1.7% of our purchases over 12 months. The City of Madison was the largest participant with $15 million on their cards, so I don't expect us to do that. But our rebate did increase by $1,000 this year, mostly due to the fact that the last quarter, that I've been here, actually pushing the departments to use the card, so much that we hit our spending limit on our card for one month. So our credit limit was exceeded, not by one in person, but by the whole group. That will probably increase so that next year, we can see even larger rebate. Then it also allows, this program online will also allow real-time access to the departments to make sure no fraudulent charges are put on their cards. The department is also going to be starting the process of implementing the financial software upgrade. We'll be working with IT and individual departments to see where improvements in the account reporting are needed. I would also ask council members to provide me with any suggestions they have, or would like to see in reporting, so that we can reconfigure the chart of accounts, so that it's much more easier to present information to the public and make it easier to understand. One of the other things that I will be bringing, once the financial software is up and running, is at one of my conferences, I was able to procure a financial reporting software vendor who will allow the city to be a beta test site for the use of their reporting software. This reporting software takes the database of the, all of the financial information, and re-shifts it around, so that you can get popular reporting, more charts, more graphs, and multi-year comparisons, so you'll be able to see a lot easier what the impact is on what-if scenarios, and what history's done for the financial reporting. Otherwise, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Kathy. Any questions or comments for Kathy? Thank you. Peg, library.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Well, library is very busy at this time of year with our summer library reading program for all ages, teens, children, and adults. Right now, we have about 150 adults signed up for our reading program, 100 teens, and just over 450 children. So that's a good percentage of our population that's using the library this summer. We have programming in our hero headquarters, which is our exhibit room this summer, and anytime, you can stop down there and find out what's happening for the children there. One of our big pushes this year is to honor heroes, and our theme is, every hero has a story. And on Thursday, we're going to be having a little cookout on the lawn with some snacks, and we're putting all the proceeds towards that, to the honor flight for veterans. And we've also have a scavenger hunt for families to fill out, and it asks them to visit three memorial sites within our community, answer questions, and write a letter to a veteran, and for every scavenger hunt that's turned in, the librarians are gonna donate $5, hopefully getting to that $500 mark for, to actually sponsor a veteran to go on the honor flight. And we encourage all council members to do that scavenger hunt as well, you can just stop over at the information desk and get a form for that. We have lots of programs coming up. On Thursday, we have a dog agility show on the lawn, and we have Bubble Wonders on Friday. There's a bee program next Monday night for families on our Bee Heroes. And then July 16th, we're honoring First Lady Eleanor Roosevelt with a T with an impersonator. So all of those things are on our website, and we encourage you to stop by and see what's happening at the library. Thank you, Mayor Smith.
Thanks, Peg. Any questions, comments for Peg? All right, Brennan, economic development.
Thank you, Mayor. My report's in the packet. Summer's starting to become relatively busy here. Code enforcement's in full swing, and I want to say thank you to Roger and his crew for helping us with the grass cutting at the moment and going through the city. We'll be bringing forward the code enforcement officer job description probably within the next month here, working with Henry and our consultant on getting that prepared, so we can hopefully get that out in somebody in here later this summer, early fall, before the snow starts flying. You may have recently seen in the newspaper or through the Plan Commission, the Anytime Fitness Project that was previously approved for the piater site on North Fulton, or North Fulton Street. The applicant actually withdrew that application, is now seeking permission to relocate his project onto the south side of Fulton Street, which is the old Kraft Churney Building. The Plan Commission gave conceptual site plan to that project, but there are a lot of issues that still need to be dealt with there, and working with the applicant as much as possible to meet his timelines, but the city's still seeking some information on there. They will be coming forward with a rezone and special use next month at the Plan Commission, and hopefully council approval later during the month. The RFP for the park and studies out on the street right now, we directly sent it to about 15 different consultants, and posted it on three separate planning or DPW websites, and we've already got some information, some requests coming back in, so definitely hopeful we'll have a competitive RFP process and bring a good project forward for everyone. And intern is currently working on some of our zoning code rework, and work with East Central Wisconsin on that, probably bring a presentation to the Plan Commission, or to the Plan Commission next month, also the city council as well, just to give you guys a flavor of the direction that the Plan Commission staff are hopefully looking to go in the future here.
Thanks, Brennan. Any comments or questions for Brennan? All right, let's move on. Roger? Welcome.
Thank you, Mary.
Mayor?
The water department is working on the DNR test, changing meters, reading meters. They're also working on the private well permit, which is ongoing. That usually takes a year or two to get everybody in compliance. We have one leaking valve on North Morton and North Street, which will probably be fixed next week, and there's a hydrant on Royleton Street, which is out of service right now because that is leaking, and that will also probably be next week. The wastewater treatment plants, the plant is running really good, they did some valve replacement, fairly major valves, and then plant, the station maintenance. The seamount work is ongoing. That is going well at this time. The street department, Hillcrest, is going well, the curb is done, the rough grading of the gravel is done, American, we hope will be in late tomorrow afternoon, Thursday, to do the fine grading, the first layer of asphalt, we hope will go down on Friday, weather permitting. The city crews have the black dirt roughed in, we hope to seed most of that tomorrow. After the first matta asphalt down, we have to, the utility adjustments, water valves and manholes. Next week, weather permitting, they'll put the final layer of asphalt on, and we hope to have it open by Friday. We've been working on storm sewer inlets, the one out here in City Hall failed, along with six, seven other ones, and that's an ongoing project, as long as cleaning those. We've been street sweeping, we started painting the crosswalks this week, today, actually. We hope to have the downtown looking fairly good by the weekend for Strawberry Festival. Patching holes, cutting grass, code enforcement, equipment repair for all departments, oil changes for the PD, et cetera. We do have one situation that's coming up, our shop hoist is 25 years old, and it's beginning to leak oil from the floor, it's basically unfixable. We are looking for options to replace it. We're in the, we should be able to come back in a couple weeks here and have information on how to finance for it, and what the quotes will be, it's in the neighborhood of $10,000 we're looking right now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Roger. Any questions, Roger, comments? Thank you. Aaron, Parks and Rec.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll start it off by kind of giving some praise to Andrew Whitman, our rec coordinator, for his movie night that he put on. He did a lot of work to make that happen. We had about 175 people attend at South Park for Monsters, Inc. Our next one is gonna be August 7th, Big Hero 6, and that's gonna be a partnership with the library, hope to have good weather like this one, and hope to have as many, if not more, people. Our staff is looking to go through some training, PBIS, it's a system in the schools, I know I've mentioned it in reports before, and we're looking to have that sometime in August, begin that. South Park, the decorative lighting is planning, and the plan is to have it all completed and the fixtures and poles up by the 4th of July. We're also gonna be bringing forward some proposals for irrigation, I've mentioned that in reports before, that'll be at the next council meeting, to upgrade all that irrigation in the circle area, as well as the fountain that's there. We spent a lot of maintenance time on that fountain, about 80 hours per summer, and we feel like we can correct that with some, with some money in phase two. Also, the Augie Austin Gym did open this week, everything looks great, Stalker Flooring did a good job. We do have to still cut the doors to be about three and a half, four inches higher than they currently are, and we do have to raise the hoops three inches, they're at about 9'9", because the floor system came up about three inches. It has not helped my shot, and I still cannot dunk a basketball. I need another half foot.
Well, if you can, nobody can in here.
We do have some tournaments going on. This last weekend, we had a girl softball tournament, which was 22 teams, it was at Swan Park and the high school, two high school fields, so we played it over six fields. Everything went well, it was supposed to be sunny weather on Saturday, ended up raining, we got all the games in, so it worked out. The girls softball board did a fantastic job working that tournament and making that a possibility. It's great when you can bring that many teams into town, spend dollars at restaurants, and help the softball board with their fundraisers, so that was fantastic. We also have one coming up this weekend, it's a 20-team tournament for 11U and 12U baseball, and then the following weekend, the 27th and 28th, we have a 30-team tournament for the 8, 9, and 10U boys baseball. After that, 4th of July, and then we have a rec tournament the week after and the weekend. One thing I did want to mention that wasn't in my report as well, was the Wal-Eyes for Kids. Roger, sitting next to me here, came up to me a few weeks ago and mentioned that the Wal-Eyes for Kids, what their fund, the money that they fundraise are interested, or were interested in possibly giving money for a hardship scholarship, or hardship program, for kids to participate in youth programs. It's something that we've been talking about for a few years, but haven't had a group that's committed money to doing it year in and year out. You know, when he, when he came to me, I thought it was a great idea, ended up going to one of their meetings, talking to him, and they just approved spending $1,000 for this year to go towards that cause, which I think is fantastic. What we're gonna do is run it through the Friends of Wopaka Parks, work with the school district guidance counselors on making sure the kids that really need it get that. We don't really want to have anything to do with choosing those people, the Wal-Eyes for Kids Board doesn't want anything to do with choosing those people, so we'll leave that up to the guidance counselors and work with them. Big Brothers, Big Sisters applications are coming in, interviews are happening at the rec center, we have, I think we're up to 13 now, bigs, got a couple this last week, and our goal was 20, so hopefully we can keep building on that, and it will start in late September, so we have some time. I put this in the report, but I do want to mention it, because it was extremely helpful, and it wouldn't be happening this year without it. The Lakeman Baseball Organization decided they wanted to donate some money towards relighting and relamping the- and relamping the baseball lights at Lakeman Field. That was originally in a capital plan and relighting that entire facility is about a $200,000 project. That would be tearing down the current poles, going with metal poles, redoing all the electrical. We talked to some WPS representatives. We feel confident that we can keep those wooden poles for the next 10 years now. That relamping lasts about 10 to 12 years, so we can get that out of it. It's going to make a huge difference. If you go to a night game there, it's awfully tough to see the ball. And it's really a safety issue and I, I think that'll be a huge, huge improvement. So, they donated $4,000 towards that project and the total cost is about $6,500, so we can cover the rest of it out of our facility's maintenance line item and we'll be able to do that and we're actually going to get the work done next week. So, Dave, thank you and please thank everyone else involved in that for me. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks, Aaron. Any comments, questions for Aaron? All right, Lieutenant Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. One of our recent hires, Chris Caniglio, submitted his letter of resignation recently. He's had an opportunity to go back to his hometown in Oneida and he was hired there, so he's going to be leaving our department. We're currently in the process of hiring, we have two individuals currently involved with our background. We're doing background checks, medical and psychological exams along with the drug screen and hopefully we'll have two new officers onboard in July. So, we're coming upon our, obviously our busier months in the summer. We've got a lot of events coming up with motorcycle rides coming through. We have one next week and the following week where we assist various organizations with traffic direction. Of course, we have Strawberry Fest and of course, the 4th of July also for scheduling. What does help is, is we have, our school resource officer Brett Rodenz is back for the summer. He has decided that he would like to remain in patrol, so he's actually going to be leaving the school and becoming a full-time patrol officer. And then our, one of our other recent hires, Officer Sam Van Denter, starting in the fall, he will go back and take the position of school resource officer for the schools. So, other than that, the specifics as far as calls for service, I believe are all in your packets and that's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Nice. All right, Henry.
Thanks, Mayor. My report is in your packet on page, beginning on page 39. I'll just hit two points. The recruitment and selection process is underway for the placement of John Edelbeck. We are conducting interviews this week. I think the plan, if it goes, goes as we've set it out, we would be bringing a recommendation to the council for your July 21st meeting for consideration. This is a department head position, so it is a mayor's appointment with your ratification, so that, that's moving forward and should be concluded in a month or so. Brennan and I, summer nights, Brennan and I are working with some chamber reps and downtown businesses to put on a couple of events in the downtown. One is August 27th, a little putt-putt golf course, golf tournament, and then a tailgate party, I believe on September 30. We moved it to Wednesday, September 30. I think the vision here is to have at least one event per month during the summer, which is, just not practical to try to get it all done this year, so we're going to try to do two events. I think I reported on this before. I think we're, we're planning on coming forward, we need to do it next month, next meeting to get your consideration to allow alcohol to be consumed by the golfers and spectators when they're golfing, which would, you know, creates a special council action. So, that, that should be coming at your next meeting. That's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Henry. Next, we'll go to unfinished business. We have the renewal of the Charter Communications contract. Josh, you back there? There we go.
Man behind the curtain. I did hear back from Charter, I think two days after our last meeting with a revised contract. They did, she did get management approval to do 80 MIGs of service at $1,700 a month. If you recall, the first contract I presented was 70 MIG at $1,700 a month, so they were willing to go up for the same price. And to recap, this is a $300 per month savings compared to what we pay now for 10 more MIGs of service. As far as phone service goes, there was no room there to get additional savings on the, more savings beyond what I presented first time, so $300 a month savings on internet with 10 more MIG and then $25 a month savings on phone from that first contract I presented for $325 a month and some extra speed. Any questions or comments?
Mayor, I'd move that we accept the renewal contract from Charter Communications for 80 MIGs of bandwidth for $1,700 and for the phone service.
Second. Here we have a motion by mail, second by Kealan, that we approve of the Charter Communications two-year contract. Any discussion? If not, Sandy, call the roll.
Scott Pachatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
And Alan Kealan.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right, let's move on to new business then. We have the Sunny Day Daycare Special Use Permit. Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This item starts on page 168 in your packet. The special use permit is required because they are expanding their existing facility that's out off of Godfrey Drive within the I-2 zoning district. Daycare facilities require special use permit. So, what's in front of you this evening is a recommendation from the Plan Commission to approve the expansion of the special use permit and the expansion of Sunny Day Daycare's facility for their programs.
This is the one final thing that we need to do to, to get their project underway. So, we'd be looking for a motion to approve of the special use permit for Sunny Day Care. Second. A motion by Olson, second by, I'm sorry, Kealan, that we approve of the Sunny Day Daycare Special Use Permit. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Alan Kealan.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
I should have mentioned too, if you notice, we are missing two members of council tonight. They both have called in and said they were unable to make it to tonight's meeting. Let's go on then, relocating the CAP Service Equal Park Project. And I'll let Aaron explain, I guess he, I see that John Kinnear is also here tonight. Hey, John.
Thank you, Mayor. John has brought a couple of blown-up plans. I know I included the first one in your guys' packet in the memo, which starts on page 176, and I'll rehash all of that. And then late last week, we did get kind of a blown-up version with just some really slight tweaks in the plan that John will have for you here, and then I'll go through it. Let's stick with Alan for now. And I'll come up.
You want to use this, Aaron, if you want to just?
Yeah, that's fine. Just kind of for me.
Okay.
Thanks. All right. First of all, I just want to start off by giving a quick history of what's kind of happened with this project. CAP Services, obviously, you guys are aware of everything that's happened with CAP Services, the fundraising they've done for an eco park at Oz Park. We've run into, you know, you've probably seen in the papers, we've talked about it here a little bit, and we've run into some negative perceptions on what may be happening there because of its, because of the natural area, because of the structures that would possibly be going on with it. And what we did is we kind of revisited everything as a staff and looked at other options. We didn't feel like kicking this project off on a negative foot and starting on that platform would be the best idea for this project. We wanted to start it off, there's, there's a ton of positives to the project and we wanted to make sure it started off on that foot to give it the best chance to succeed. So, I'm sure you guys have kind of read through the memo, but what we've done is, we went back and revisited the Oz, or the, I'm sorry, the East Gate property site. And it's a 14.5 acre parcel that the city currently owns and manages and actually Roger's crew does mow the grass on part of it now, that's green space out there. The foundry and BRM work together to do a community project, kind of like the Slid Hill on a smaller scale, and there is money tied to that in the amount of about $22,000. That $22,000 was going to go into traditional playground and actually probably could have been done at the end of last year or this spring. We as park staff were a little hesitant to do it right away just because of the amount of residents currently out there and we kind of saw it as an outlier park at this point until that maybe got filled and we'd be maintaining that and then mowing it and as soon as it becomes a park, then our guys go and mow it and Roger's crew might not. So, we're happy with them doing it for a while. We now revisited because of everything that happened and this is actually the original property that Cliff came to us with, Cliff from CAP Services. And we kind of went to the Oz and now we're back here. And really, after looking at this, I think there's a lot of positives, not only with the project itself and the education portion of this project, but how we think it can have a positive impact on that neighborhood in the East Gate subdivision out there. What we wanted to do is, we wanted to make sure we worked with a professional, being John Kinnear and Rettler, to get some plans drawn up and show you more than just sketches. We did pay for their services out of the BRM money. We cleared that with BRM, make sure it's okay, and we were able to get some plans drawn up and work with John and they were very timely. I think they got their work done in about four days the first time and we've been working with them since, so they've been very responsive, so thank John for that. As you can see in your, in your packet, let's go over that first. The site, there's a site map, it does show 14.5 acres. This is off of Webster Way to the west of that. There are the things that you probably expected to see in it. The first thing that would happen if this was voted on to move would be tearing down the open air shelter that is currently at Oz and relocating it to the top of the hill at East Gate. This top of the hill overlooks, has a great view to the south where the natural amphitheater would eventually possibly go. It overlooks the green space where kids in the area or families can play baseball, soccer, a pickup game, also the natural playground structures that would be planned to be put in as well. But in phase one, it would be mainly that open air shelter being relocated and then you've seen the budget and the plans, which are included for the education center, which is marked on your plan as well. It's in the northeast portion of the property. Now, one of the concerns and probably the biggest concern is how it affects maybe that lot right to the east, on the northeast. And we did talk about that. We met on site with Mary Patoka, who's the director of CAP Services, addressed those concerns. I know, I wasn't able to get a hold of them, but Henry did speak with Mike Olson, who's kind of the leader in the housing development over there. And we did make some changes to that, shifted the education center to the west a little bit. It's about 55 feet off of that property line. There is plans to plant trees, a tree barrier in there to mitigate some of that sightline from that prospective lot to the education center. Now, just remember that right now, the view from that lot is also the lift station, so that kind of puts it in perspective as, as how it looks now. Speaking of the trees and planting those as a barrier, Russ Montgomery did successfully apply for a grant for $2,500, I believe it was, to start planting trees in this area. So, that would be a great head start for that purpose and I think that would be the main focus area to begin with. You can also see in the plan, tree plantings on the west part of the property to kind of shield the highway, not only from the park, but maybe from the rest or, you know, a number of those housing developments or future housing developments in that subdivision. One thing that I really liked about the plan that John came up with, and we actually didn't talk about prior to, is the trail system. You can see the looping trail system within the park. We estimated that it's probably about a mile with all of the trails and this is something we can see as a quick win. These wouldn't be paved, they wouldn't be limestone, but just cut, just mowed to begin with. And this is something that we could show, hey, something's happening out there, doesn't cost a lot of money, it can happen right away. You can see it has neighborhood connections on Young Drive, Mayak Drive and Linsmire Lane, so that's easy access for anyone coming off of those streets as a pedestrian or a biker. We do have in there as well, kind of a bus loop that John did create and put together and then you can kind of see in this, this is a blow-up that we have up to my left here of that area, the kind of focus area of the park. And the bus lane or the bus turnaround is a little different than you see in your packet and so is the education center. It's moved a few feet. This kind of gives you hopefully a better idea of what that area can look like. You can see the lines of topography here where the, where the open air shelter is, showing that it is on the top of the hill. You can see from some of the pictures in your packet, the view that that shows. When talking about the natural playground equipment, that's something that I was not familiar with before this. It's something that Cliff had brought up and I think it's a really neat idea and there's some pictures and examples of that natural playground equipment in your packet as well. Overall, I know it's mentioned in your memo, but, you know, we see a lot of positives to this area. It does butt up to the natural area to the north, so a lot of the things that you could do in Oz, you could still do in this location, but you're not constructing an education center, a shelter, those things in the natural area itself, it would be to the south of that. There's a trail that goes right to the northwest of the lift station and you can access that area down by the river from there. Another positive is just the parks' impact on the neighborhood possibly. I can tell you from the things that we know about parks is that that will not hurt residential development in that area and I would strongly argue that it would help. We are, you know, we're looking at this more not only now as an education center, but also as a neighborhood park for the East Gate subdivision, and I think it can be used as that. We also want to look at it as, you know, I, I think that it's still important, obviously, that tax, the, the money situation is still the same. You'll see in the back of your packet, we have a memorandum of understanding, there's some slight tweaks to that memo and basically just referring to the location change and then the fact that there will be no taxpayer dollars spent with the, well, and not with the exception of, but there is that pot of money from BRM that aren't, that is not taxpayer dollars, that's just under $20,000 now, that can be spent and is designated for this area. So, that's kind of what we've been working on. I'm sure I'm missing something and I'm sure you guys will have a, a question or two for me, but that is kind of a brief overview of what we've been working on and what we hope to do out in that, on that parcel of land. Does anyone have questions regarding the plans for me or John or Cliff? Before I actually open that up, I do want to give just a brief timeline. If this was recommended or if it came forward and was voted on to move it tonight, they would immediately start tearing down that open air shelter at Oz and relocating it and then the education center would start construction, hopefully have a roof overhead by the winter months and when it gets bad in the late fall, and then be finishing stuff, stuff up inside over the winter and hopefully- then be finishing stuff, stuff up inside over the winter and hopefully have it open for use in the spring. And then, like I said, the other things are kind of Phase Two and Phase Three projects, but any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Brennan?
More of a question or comment, whether it's Aaron or John. You know, the whole process and Aaron, you know, Aaron and I worked on this originally when Cliff came to me about doing this park, and this was the location. Is this going to be more of a nat, what type of grass are you guys thinking of planting, are you guys going to be doing? Prairie plantings out here or anything else that may assist in some of the lesser maintenance in the long term?
Right now, no, there's no plans for planting any prairie plantings or anything like that. You know, one thing about moving it from Oz as well and out of the natural area that was, I think we all know that there's some restrictive covenants placed on that property. We don't, you know, it's obviously going to have that sustainable education part of this park, but it now can also morph into more of a neighborhood park than it could have in the Oz property. So, some of that stuff that maybe we were definitely planning on doing there may not happen, or maybe it will and it's just not something that we've talked about yet. You know, we, Rettler also did the South Park Plan, and I said, we look at the South Park Plan all the time when we're applying for grants, Phase Four, Three, Four now. A ton of work has gotten done, but it looks way different than the original plan. We had a splash pad. The, in the Phase One portion, we had, the shelter was located where the playground now is, and it got moved, and I think it was a great decision to do that, but that doesn't mean that we don't look at it moving forward all the time. We're now going to be hopefully looking into working on the boat landing, and we're going to be still constructing the pier across from Shadow Lake. So, obviously, this is a conceptual plan, something that can change, but this is kind of the vision for that park right now.
Aaron, I'd like to repeat a question that Eric asked at the Park and Rec Board, and very good answer, so I think people would benefit by hearing it. What about the parking? Adwood parking?
Yep. So, right now, there is a small little, kind of a pull-off area out there that's not shown in this, that fits about five to six cars. So, people have asked, you know, what if, there are a couple of families that come and use it. Where do they park? Do they park on the road? Do they block into the driveway? And there is an area where you can fit five to six cars now, and that wouldn't change. And that would be a part of the, we would build that into the bus turnaround if that happened, when that happened. So, we would make sure that there was room for that. There is also the option of street parking if there's more people there than that allowed. We also have talked to Jeff Dyer, who obviously needs to get into that lift station. Jeff, superintendent of wastewater, and his main concern was just access to that lift station by parking people off of the main road there. We can provide that.
Anybody have any questions, comments? What we'd be looking for is approval of that memorandum of understanding that you can see in your packet. It starts on page two-oh-two if you're okay with this idea. Again, I think it's a good alternative to, to what the plan was. I think, I guess, as it turns out, we had a misunderstanding of, of, of the Oz property and the intentional use of the, or the intentions of the use of that property. So, this is, and as this turns out, this is probably a better fit anyways for this, for this project. So, I would recommend that we go forward with this.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city and CAP Services.
Second.
Motion by Peters, Dave Peterson, second by Pachetzky, that we approve of the memorandum of understanding between CAP Services and the City of Opaqueha. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
Gillian Peterson?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Alan, Alan Kealan?
Aye.
Scott Pachetzky?
Aye.
And Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thanks, Aaron. John, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on then. We have license report number twelve-eighty. This is an operator's license. Henry, you got your name on here, but this is, unless there is...
Routine.
Yeah, this is just routine unless there, if there's any discussion that council would like to have, we would be looking for a motion to approve.
Make a motion, we approve license report twelve-eighty, pending checks and everything.
Second.
Motion by Whitman, second by Chestnut, that we approve of license report number twelve-eighty. This is an operator's license. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Next, we have, well, let's look at the first two ordinances, six dash fifteen and seven dash fif, well, we got three ordinances in a row, John. All I'll, I'll turn those over to you.
The first two ordinances kind of go together. Chapter twenty-three, which had to do with non-union employee fringe benefits, has gotten to be a little messy, and it did require, when there were changes to vacation and pay and various other things, that it would, all had to be done by change of ordinance. And after discussion with Henry, it made sense to repeal that chapter in its entirety and then recreate Chapter twenty-three and to adopt Employee Handbook. Now, I don't know if all of you have read the Employee Handbook, but I imagine Mr. Hackett isn't here tonight because he is at home reading that Employee Handbook, which is about five hundred pages, so.
It's not very nice of you to pick up.
Oh, I know that, but, just saying. It is quite lengthy, but it does cover everything that was in the previous Chapter twenty-three is in that Employee Handbook, among other things, and this new ordinance does allow the council to amend that handbook from time to time without having to do an ordinance file change.
Okay. So, this is the first reading of both of those ordinances. As John said, they do go hand in hand, basically. Does anybody have any questions on these ordinances? These will be posted out in the lobby up above, and then they're also in the newspaper?
After they're adopted.
Okay. So, they're just posted up in...
There are copies of that handbook available.
Oh, certainly, yes.
For anybody to look, yeah.
Is that online?
Actually, it's, I think it's up on our website.
Yeah, I thought so.
Yeah, right.
Okay. All right. So, that's the first reading. Look forward to seeing that on July seventh at our next council meeting. Okay, and then we have ordinance number zero-eight-one-five.
And this has to do with the construction up on Hillcrest Drive, basically, that right away, as I understand it, is narrower than most rightaways. And after the construction's completed, the curb brick and the rest of it, parking is really going to be something that is not going to work. And so, this is just an ordinance to disallow parking on both sides of Hillcrest Drive. I don't think there's many places that anybody ever parked anyway. There's a couple of houses and most of it was parking lots for the apartment building and a couple of the houses, but they have their own parking, so it really doesn't affect too many people, I don't think.
I'm sure Roger could give more detail. They did discuss this when they had the public meeting on that project. This reduced restriction, or this restriction, so the property owners were aware of it before the project.
Yeah, the property owners are aware of it. We had a public meeting on it. They agreed no one parked on the street anyway, so our plan is to restrict parking on both sides of the street on the interior.
All right. Any questions there? Again, that's just the first reading of this, so you'll see this at our next council meeting. Roger, I mean, with the project being done, are you going to wait till July seventh to put those signs up, or are we?
No.
You're going to put them up right away? Okay. So, we'll be doing this after the fact, probably, but if we do have some, if we decide not to do that, we'll have to take them down, but we'll go ahead and put them up when the road opens up. Okay, under number ten, again, remember that we're delaying the discussion on this until our July seventh meeting, or one of the meetings in July, for sure. Communications recommendations of the mayor. Henry did tell you that we're, we're in the process of interviewing candidates for the Public Works Director. We're right in the middle of that. We have some good candidates, not trying to jinx ourselves or anything, but doing very well there. And I don't think we'll be back together again before the Fourth of July, so I hope that all of you have a very happy holiday weekend. My employees, my employees at the accounting office are a little disappointed that July fourth falls on a Saturday and they don't get a paid vacation day, but it is what it is. Saves me money. All right, next, we'll move on to adjournment. We're looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Kealan, second by Chestnut, we adjourn till our next regular scheduled meeting, which is Tuesday, September seventh, two thousand fifteen.
July.
Or July fifteenth, July seventh, two thousand fifteen, subject to call. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, motion carried. We are adjourned at seven-oh-two PM. Thank you, everybody, for attending, watching, and so forth, so on. Have a great night.